Good evening. Call to order this meeting of the Board of Education, March 19th. Please rise to pledge the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, okay. We did this earlier, but we're going to do it again. Can we just get a moment of silence, please, for a former teacher, Florence Lasco? I truly believe she was at the high school when I first started. She worked with us for many years. Her granddaughter is now one of our teachers. So for Florence and her family, can we get a moment of silence, please? Thank you. Ms. Hell, Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Esposito?
Here.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Mrs. Napolitano?
Here.
Mrs. Pabon?
Here.
Ms. Pylock? Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Walsh?
Here.
And Mrs. Bloom?
Here. Can you please summarize executive sessions?
We had personnel, including but not limited to agenda items, on the agenda. However, it was not discussed. The Board did discuss matters falling under returning client privilege.
Okay, is there any correspondence that we need to note of?
No.
I now need a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Second?
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Mrs. Napolitano?
Yes.
Mrs. Pabon?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes. Okay, and now we move on to our student council representatives. Sean, you gonna go first for us?
Yes ma'am. Good evening, Board. Here are the events that have been happening at SWMHS over the past weeks. DECA has over 25 students headed to the International Career Development Conference after placing top four in their events in the State Career Development Conference. The conference was extremely competitive, and we wish all students traveling to Anaheim, California in April, the best of luck regarding their events. Odyssey of Mind has two groups headed to states for technical and performance problems. SWMHS Odyssey of the Mind works tirelessly to chase perfection in solving their problems creatively, and our students made that clear with their performances. FBLA recently traveled down to Atlantic City for the state leadership conference. SWMHS had over 20 students placed in the top four in competitive events ranging from social media strategies to an American enterprise project, which means that they have qualified for the National Leadership Conference in Orlando at the end of June. Congratulations to everyone who placed and to all who gained valuable business experience in AC. The Theater Society performed yet another spectacular show with Tuck Everlasting. The cast, faculty, and volunteers spent months honing their craft, and the result was nothing short of awe inspiring. The collaboration between actors, stage crew, business crew, sound crew, light crew, and the leading faculty consistently leads to a fantastic output. We can't wait to see what show the theater department puts on next. Students taking art and theater classes at the high school had the opportunity to attend Teen Arts Festival at Middlesex for workshops and subjects such as drawing, dance, ceramics, and more. Two seniors, Isabella Colazo and Michelle Gonzalez, have been selected to represent SWMHS at the state teen arts festival for their fantastic pieces. Moving on to sports, the spring season has just begun. Players are getting their six practices in order to play in scrimmages and get ready for competition. And shortly thereafter, the season will already be underway. Good luck to all teams this season. In terms of upcoming events, this week is a countdown to Spring Break Spirit Week. Today, students wore March Madness-inspired clothing. Tomorrow is for pastel colors. Thursday, students dress up as barbecue dads slash soccer moms, and Friday is themed Hawaiian slash beach day. Thursday afternoon, International Society will be hosting an Ireland Day, complete with Irish clothing, food, and a presentation of Irish culture following St. Patrick's Day. On Thursday night, senior boys will compete to earn the coveted title of Mr. Saraville. There will be a group dance, bathing suit contest, talent show, and a dress-to-impress event. The student body always turns out for this event, and this year will be no different with the crowning of Mr. Saraville 2024. And lastly, the student council would like to wish all students, faculty, staff, and their families a restful and rejuvenating spring break.
Thank you, Sean. And first, we'd like to say that we missed you for the past couple meetings.
Thank you.
I think I know where you were. How did everything go?
It all went very, very well. Yeah, both for the surgery and for being in competition.
And I don't see crutches, so you're fine? You're walking good?
Yeah, I'm good. Well, not good, but I'm recovering well.
Well, we miss you.
Good to be back.
Ashton held the fort down in your absence.
I was strong?
But we did miss you. Now, I have another important matter. It's been brought to my attention that a certain person on the FBLA placed third in community service project.
Perhaps.
As well as fourth in impromptu speaking, so congratulations, my friend.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
That's quite the honor.
Yeah.
And I'm presuming that you're gonna go to Anna. You're gonna go to Disneyland for that competition, correct?
Yeah, most certainly. I will definitely be going. And I just want to make sure to reiterate once again, everyone else who plays, definitely congratulations to them too, because that's no small feat.
Spoken like a gentleman. Thank you, buddy.
Thank you, Sean. Okay, Ashton, you're up.
Good evening, Board of Education members and administrators. My name is Ashton Fondal, SMS Student Council Board of Education representative. The student council will be hosting an Anything Goes Assembly on March 22nd. It will be Staff First Student Assembly. Spirit Week will take place the week of March 18th. The spring food drive for March ended last week. The Saraville School District will be honored by CASA Court Appointed Special Advocates of Middlesex County at an event, Toast 2024, on May 7th at Chateau Grande. CASA is honoring the district for the middle school's community service club's support and collection of their gift drive for foster care for over a decade. During Council Mono, Community Service Advisor will be present to accept the award on behalf of the district. The community service club continue to decorate coffee sleeves with positive and kind messages for Bombers Beyond for Kindness Month. The class council is continuing the Positive Impact bracelets, Together and Choose Kindness. Each week, a student and teacher are recognized why they received the bracelet over the morning announcements. The SMS Class Council is in the process of organizing an eighth-grade trip. They had great success in their Double Good Popcorn fundraiser. Thank you, everyone, for your support. Harlem Wizards game versus the Thunderstruck Bombers Teacher Team is Thursday, April 4th, at the high school gym. Eighth-grade semi-formal dance is Friday, May 10th. Ticket information will be sent out soon. Now on to the Saraville Middle School Athletics. The Saraville Middle School softball team hosted their tryouts last week. The coaching staff is very excited to get their season underway and anticipate a successful, competitive, and fun season ahead. Spring track concluded their tryouts. They are looking forward to a successful season with many talented athletes. Middle School baseball tryouts concluded last week, and that's it.
Great job.
Great job, Ashton, as always.
All righty, on to President's comments. I have a lot of comments tonight. This was a very busy week. It's gonna be a very busy month. We started out with Read Across America, and I would like to thank the principals and staff at Barlet, Cheesequake, Slover, Truman, and Eisenhower for welcoming me into Read to the little ones who gave me hugs and made my day. Also, as Sean mentioned, excuse me, the Teen Arts Festival took place at Middlesex County College. I was thrilled to see three or four busloads of our students there, and I was honored to give two workshops on glass etching during that festival. Tuck Everlasting, fantastic job. Took my two little granddaughters, and they loved it. Swim banquet, boys' basketball banquet. I start to feel like a vampire because I only come out at night for these events, but at least I get the shoes out of the closet. So it's been very busy. It's going to be very busy moving forward. A lot going on. But I want to close with that members of the Saraville American Legion Color Guard demonstrated the proper way to fold the American flag to the staff and students at the Bomber Beyond Cafe. They did this at the end of February. The demonstration showed how the American flag is folded 13 times to create a triangle, and the students and staff were then assisted to properly fold the flag. And also, we had Channel 12 at the Bomber Beyond Cafe, so it's been a busy week for everyone. Okay, Mrs. Napolitano?
Okay, there's a lot to read here. Congratulations to the following Saraville War Memorial High School seniors who have achieved the top 10 status based upon their grade point average. They are Jade Desai, valedictorian; Shriya Patel, salutatorian; Amika Patel; Amoli Patel; Ruhi Patel; Shaquille Assephra; Shriya Mida; Christie Garcia; Bianca Lowendowski; and Riva Barbaria. Congratulations and commendations to our Bombers Unified Sports Student Athletics who participated in this year's Unified March Madness Basketball Games for their amazing display of teamwork and sportsmanship. Thank you to Ms. Karkeek and all the advisors, coaches, and staff members who once again who made each game this year so special for all our student athletes and everyone who attended. Congratulations to Saraville War Memorial High School student musician Richard Kuzma, who performed Megastory League during the All-State Band Concert. Congratulations to Saraville War Memorial High School Academic Competition Teams B and C for trying for third place in the recent Rowan University Quiz Bowl. Team B consisted of Rohad Pramandi, Alina Lee, Sophia Lin, Colby Chang, and Kadashi Mer, while Team C consisted of Dev Shah, Shaleah Modi, Avani Talati, Marissa Mandola, and Rhea Patel. Marissa Mandola was the top scorer out of the entire tournament, winning first place in the individuals. Congratulations to the members of the Saraville War Memorial High School DECA Chapter who placed in the recent New Jersey DECA State Competition. The Saraville War Memorial High School Chapter also received awards for their membership campaign and achieved the Thrive level in chapter campaigns. Congratulations to three Saraville War Memorial High School Odyssey of the Mind teams that placed in the top four this past weekend OTM tournament. The Problem Two and Problem Five teams will move on to the state tournament. Bravo and congratulations to the student performers and crew members in the Saraville War Memorial High School Theater Society for their impressive production of Tuck Everlasting. Congratulations and commendations to Ms. Distalulo, sorry, I can't say that. Thank you, Distal, and her incredible team of dedicated directors, designers, and volunteers. Congratulations to the Saraville War Memorial High School Competition Cheer Team who took third place in the New Jersey Cheer and Dance Coaches Association Competition. Congratulations to the Saraville Middle School Cheer Team who won first place in the All-Music Division in the New Jersey Cheer and Dance Coaches Association Competition. Congratulations and commendations to the Saraville War Memorial High School Winter Guard for placing third out of 14 groups from New Jersey and Pennsylvania during a competition last weekend. And congratulations to the Saraville War Memorial High School Sam Jones, who will be named 2324 All-New Jersey Basketball Coaches Association Team.
And if I can add, this is the third consecutive year, I believe, Ms. Grossman, that we have twins that are in the top 10. Third consecutive year that twins.
We have two sets of twins, am I correct, in the top 10? I'm sorry, two sets of twins in the top 10?
No, I think it's just one set of twins, but this is the third consecutive year we've had twins in the top 10.
Okay, Dr. Labby, now over to our presentations.
Well, Mrs. Napolitano, I thank you for going ahead and announcing one of those major accomplishments. We're here to celebrate two sets of outstanding students. The first, we've already mentioned, so we might as well begin with them. As Mrs. Napolitano told you, our middle school competition cheer team placed first in the All-Music Division, and I believe, Mrs. Lynch, they were grand champions in the New Jersey Cheer and Dance Coaches Association Tournament, which we consider a state championship. This is the second year that they have won a state championship. Fifth year, I'm sorry, I'm getting my cue set, but second year in a row. Is it five in a row? So last year, we were state champions. That's amazing. What a tradition that our young people are carrying out, obviously through the great tutelage of our coaches and the support of their parents, and we couldn't be more proud of them. So, to celebrate our 2024 New Jersey Cheer and Dance Coaches Association Grand Champions, I'd like to ask Mrs. Lynch to join us at the podium with Ms. Napolitano and Mr. Callahan so that we can celebrate them. And Mrs. Lynch, if you want to say a few words about the children before you go ahead and start announcing names, we left here.
Yes, I prepared. Thank you, Board of Education members and administration, for inviting us here tonight to recognize the Saraville Middle School All-Music Competition Team on their fifth NJCDCA state title. Coach Boyle's Taylor Swift theme choreography was creative and well-crafted. Her passion as a Swiftie came through in the motions and energy throughout the routine. From the bows to the bracelets to the music, the athletes were fearless during their performance. Not only did they take first in the middle school division, but these lovers of cheerleading earned the highest score in middle school competition history with a 91.3. This year's team also beat out several varsity teams in this competition. Saraville Middle School Competition Cheer has built quite the reputation over the years, and we're excited to see what the new era will bring. Thank you to Coach Erin Handy for volunteering her time to work with the athletes and incorporate new skills and ideas. She brings her once-a-bomber, always-a-bomber pride, dedication, and knowledge to practices and competitions. Thank you to Coach Cassidy Ritter, who volunteered her time to work with the game day choreography in between Eagles practices and appearances. Thank you to Coach Ritter for your time and working with our athletes on how to be sharp. I would like to thank our amazing supportive parents who drove once to twice a week to the All-Star Gym to pick up their children. Thank you for the encouraging emails. We truly appreciate everything you do for our program. As coaches, we love seeing the Sea of Royal Blue and a bomber country flag hanging in the stands when the bombers take the map. Thank you to our biggest cheerleaders, Jennifer Badami and the middle school administration. Thank you to Tom Law for all your time and communication regarding our athletes and their well-being. It takes a village, and we are grateful for our SMS Bomber Village. Thank you. Okay, our first athlete, Zoe Anderson. Our next athlete, Madison Assang. Haley Asterita. Oh, guys, no, no. Zoe, Zoe. Samantha Callahan. Jalen Chung. Savannah Crowley. Summer Corbello. Maddie Keough. Ariana Kenny. Alyssa Latchman. Victoria Maratoli. Valentina Martinez. Chloe Multry. Alyssa Adi. Melina Posler. Brielle Perry. Kaylee Prebenza. Gianna Romano. Leanne Russer. Julie Sekarac. Alana Seragines. And Ava Solokowski. Ms. Boyle and Ms. Ritter, please come up. While you're organizing, Mrs. Boyle, was that score 91.3? As in, it ends in 13? Oh, come on, Taylor Swift. Good job, girls.
And as Mrs. Bloom is getting everyone ready, Mrs. Boyle and Mrs. Lynch? And as she's getting everybody organized, I just, I don't know if you, you know, every year, these young ladies, many, many more young ladies come out to try out. And unfortunately, you know, due to the limitations that we've had, we've had to cut many young ladies from the team, and that's been a concern of our coaches. And our coaches advocated to Ms. Badami, who advocated to the Board of Education, that we create an additional middle school cheer team so that we can get more of our middle school students involved in cheer. And I'm happy to tell you right now, the budget, the tentative budget that the Board of Education is going to approve tonight includes an additional middle school coach so that we can do that.
You weren't too late. I did a Callahan once this year, right? Another big group coming up.
Okay, now time for our second group of remarkable student athletes, and that would be our incredible winter or indoor girls' track and field team, which I believe won the Greater Middlesex Conference White Division Championship for the 150th straight year. Is that true? Actually, they are state champions, and Coach Paspa can correct me if I'm wrong, for the eighth consecutive year this year, correct, Coach Paspa? Eighth consecutive division championship. And I'm also very proud to announce to you that Coach Paspa has been named the Greater Middlesex Conference Coach of the Year as well. And I believe that's not the first time either, is it, Coach Paspa? No. Please, give a great big hand for Coach Paspa so he can help us celebrate our GMC White Division Winter Indoor Track and Field Girls Team Champions. And to help him will be Mr. Smith. So Coach Paspa, would you like to say a few words before we?
Thank you once again for inviting us here tonight. As you said, this is these girls' eighth consecutive White Division title, which is incredible for, I'll say eighth, they were yelling nine back there. There was a year where there was no championship for COVID, so goes back nine years, but eight actual championships that we won. What's incredible about these girls is the balance that we have across the whole team. Every year, we come into the division, we don't know quite where we're going to, you know, be a little bit weaker than the previous year, where we're gonna be a little bit stronger, and every year across the board, they are scoring in every possible discipline: jumps, vaults, hurdles, sprints, throws, distance. And each year, a different group shines. In this particular year, distance scored over half the points for us, but we scored in every single discipline there and ended up winning by over 50 points this season. So, an outstanding year. I do, before we get to some of the certificates, want to also highlight a few individual accomplishments. We had six girls make the All-Division Team and one girl make All-Conference. So, Mo Akkerfond, you were All-White Division? As was Angelia Lapri, Molly Logan, Crystal Margada, and Leila Stevenson. Sayla Khan, you were both All-White Division and All-Conference.
Wow.
And, I'm sorry, one more thing, I would be remiss.
Coach Paspa, there's a three-minute.
No, there is not. Do not listen to them.
We're kidding.
I know. I would be remiss if I didn't also thank our coaches. We've been, I've been with this staff for pretty much since the beginning of this streak has started, and I essentially have three head coaches out there with me. They are incredibly strong. I rattle down their accomplishments with our team. I'd be here for another 10 minutes, so I will spare everyone, but I do want to thank Coach Drebic, who's here with us tonight. Since she's here, I'll rattle off some, one of her big accomplishments. Of the 20 school records in hurdles, jumps, and sprints, she has she has worked with 18 of the current 20 record holders. And a lot of those girls broke the records of other girls or guys that she coached. So, outstanding job, Coach Drabek. In addition, Coach Garcia, uh, has been the mastermind of our throwing program for the last 10 or so years. And, uh, Coach Logan, I see more than my own wife, because we're coaching three seasons a year together. Um, but he's our, he's the mastermind of our distance program. So thank you to all those coaches and all that they do. All right, ladies, come on up. We have Jackie Abasola. Mo Akinrefan. Ruby Alba. Loysey Anning. Chelsea Assari. Lanaya Brown. Chrissy Kabantan. Sandy Costa. Kelly Garcia Pereira. Anna Grzynska. Zayla Khan. Casey Corteng. Kelly Corteng. Julia Kuklich. Angelia Lapri. Molly Logan. Crystal Margada. Analia Marrero. Shria Metta. Crystal Onachi. Brianna Opang Mpofo. Amika Patel. Amoli Patel. Ariana Paul. Alicia Peña. Gianna Pesci. Lily Paulson. Charlie Rogers. Leilani Rojas. Jade Aroque. Sarah Smith. Leila Stevenson. And Tayla Winfrey. Sorry, and, uh, Destiny Gant, you left off our list, I'm sorry, come on up.
Okay, Mrs. Bloom, you got your work up.
I'm working on it. Hold on ladies, don't get ahead of them.
Get in there, Joe.
Well, that's good, you're flying.
Mr. Drabek, you need to get in the picture. Mary Beth, you got to get in that picture.
What can I not see?
We're gonna go to the back and go.
Let's go, I'm safe. There's no way. Jump up. No, I'm good. I'm safe, go ahead, I dare you. You want the board to vote me off?
First board bumper out of work, let's go.
Wait a minute, don't, no, does that work though? It's amazing that many people want to vote, you know how I feel about it.
I know.
Yeah.
Don't say that.
Yep. Let's see, anybody be remaining? I know, I wish I could run away too. Had to be translated, yeah. Nobody texted me Danielle's out, you weren't here.
Okay, we can continue now with our meeting. Anybody who wants to stay, feel free. Okay, board discussions, we will begin with finance and infrastructure, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mrs. Bloom. Uh, lots to talk about with the referendum projects, bids are moving along nicely. Uh, our HVA systems at the, uh, Warner Memorial High School in Truman, the units are in, just waiting on the install. They'll take place four rooms at a time at the high school and two rooms at a time at Truman. The second bid for windows at Slover, Arlyth, and the middle school. And the Slover bathrooms and vestibule are moving along. Arlyth is completed, just a few punch list items on that. Uh, and Slover windows are most likely go in, in mid-March, once the weather starts to cooperate. Same thing with the third bid for roofing at Arlyth Wilson, the upper elementary school, middle school, and high school. Um, Arlyth is completed. The, the rest are kind of on hold until the weather warms up and we can move on with that. Our electrical bid, our fourth bid, is just waiting on equipment and scheduling. Uh, the fifth bid is awarded and looking to move forward in April. The sixth bid, windows, the W, at the WES and U, SUAS, and the high school are awarded and waiting on a construction meeting. Our seventh bid, um, which was going to be voted on tonight, is not going to be. Uh, we're still working on the bids for that to get them more in line with estimates. Roofs are completed in all the schools that needed new roofs, solar's moving along. The theater, new sound system was completed just in time for the performance the other day. Grandstand audio at the football stadium is installed, just waiting on training and commissioning. And the stadium lighting is just waiting on a few more parts and that will be completely upgraded very soon. And that is all.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, anybody have any questions for Mr. Smith? No? Okay. Personnel, uh, Mrs. Pylek is not here, does anybody want to run us quickly through personnel?
Yeah, I don't mind. Um, we discussed current vacancies that we have, as well as projected vacancies for the 2024-2025 school year. And we just, we discussed plans for the May 4th, um, job fair that we're going to host here in the district.
Thank you. Governance, Mrs. Napalatana?
We reviewed and, uh, we reviewed revisions to the VU policy 5570 Sportsmanship and Policy and Regulation 8600, Student Transportation, which we will ask you to approve them for a first meeting on April, first reading on April 2nd, 2024, and a second reading on April 16th, 2024. After that, we discussed the new public education-related legislation that is being proposed to both the New Jersey Assembly and/or Senate.
That's it, thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Napalatana? Alrighty, student achievement. Mr. Callahan?
Yesterday afternoon, we had the, uh, student achievement committee meeting. During the meeting, Mrs. Grossman reviewed the new courses coming to the high school, which I was very excited about. That American Sign Language 2 is coming out because American Sign Language 1 was so successful. Went from one section to three sections. And we're adding, uh, ASL 2 next year, which is great news. And we even discuss the possibility of adding ASL to the elementary schools. So more, more updates, more news coming on that in the future. Um, and there's also another new high school course called Python, which is for computer science, any computer science geeks out there like me. It's a new language being spoken instead of Java. Kind of don't understand what I'm talking about. Only the computer science people will. So, um, and then lastly, she spoke about the summer programs, Camp Excel, the middle school credit completion program and the AP bootcamps. And then Ms. Burt gave us updates, provided updates on professional development, current interventions, uh, innovations, including the link, the pilot that we're doing with the Lincoln Intervention Manager. That's going well, I know. And she gave, she discussed all the grants that are going on. The New Jersey Learning High Impact Teaching Grant, the Teacher Climate and Culture Innovation Grant, the New Jersey Student Learning Standards through interdisciplinary learning and community resilience grant. Said that all, one sentence there. The ESA updates and the ESSR Performance Report as well. And that's the way it is.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Callahan, any questions for Mr. Callahan? Okay.
Thanks for your job, Mr. Callahan. Thank you.
And now, uh, Middlesex County School Boards Association update. We are excited and looking forward to the Unsung Heroes Bank Group, which will be held on Thursday, April 18th, at Old Bridge High School. And we have two students, who we shall not name yet. But every year there are, there is one junior and one senior, so looking forward to that event. Alrighty, at this time, we will open to public participation for agenda items only. Okay, seeing none, we will close public and Dr. Labby, superintendent's report.
And thank you, Mrs. Bloom, if I can bring your attention to pages three and four. Number 13, we're asking you to approve, I mentioned it earlier, the 2024-2025 tentative school district budget in the amount of $125,572,752. Number 14, which you can find on page four, we're asking you to approve the submission of the 2024-2025 Preschool Expansion Aid Enrollment Budget Workbook. And that's in the amount of $11,813,998. Number 15, which you can find on page four, we're asking you to approve a contract with Cefeli and Sun General Construction Incorporated for sidewalk repairs at the Samstow Upper Elementary School here, and the Jesse Slover School, as well as the replacement of Americans with Disabilities Act compliant accessibility ramps at Saverville Middle School. That's in the amount of $63,450. Any questions on those or any other items on finance and infrastructure? Okay, seeing none. Student achievement, which you can find on the addendum. Number one, we're asking to approve the SANDA Systems for the Special Education Resource Program. If you're not familiar with SANDA Systems, it's an alternative literacy development program. Mr. Naster's been hard at work all year with a core group of teachers and administrators looking at a variety of different alternative literacy development programs to replace what we're currently using. And we've decided on SANDA Systems. It's in the budget. We're actually going to use funds, current school year funds, to purchase it for next year. And then we've used budgeted funds for the following year. This way, we can provide our staff with the training that they're going to need to implement it. Any questions on that item or, or the other item that is on student achievement? Both of which are on the addendum. Okay, seeing none. If I can bring your attention to governance, number two, which you can find on page 13, we're asking you to approve the revision of multiple Board of Education policies and regulations for a second reading and adoption. And number three, which you can find in pages 13 and 14, we're asking you to approve the Teamsters Local 469 Holiday Schedule for the 2024-2025 school year. Any questions on governance items? Seeing none, let's proceed to personnel. Number six and seven, as well as 26 and 27, which can be found in pages 16 in the addendum, we're asking to approve the appointment of new certified and non-certified staff for this school year. Similarly, numbers eight and 28 and 29, which can be found in pages 17 in the addendum, we're asking to approve the transfer of non-certificated staff for this school year. Numbers 16 and 17, which can find on pages 19 and 20, we're asking to approve New Jersey High Impact Grant Tutoring Coordinators with their stipends. By the way, these stipends will be funded through the New Jersey High Impact Tutoring Grant that we were recently awarded. And finally, numbers 20 and 31, which you can find on page 21 in the addendum, we're asking you to approve Title I Parent Engagement Facilitators. And that concludes my report, Mrs. Bloom, any questions on personnel?
Nice, quick report tonight.
Yes, very quick. Could be a record, I know Mr. Walsh is probably looking to see.
Alrighty, so that is it for the report. Okay, now we will move to public participation on anything.
We have to vote on the-
I'm sorry. We have to vote-
Don't jump the gun there, Liz.
We have to vote on the budget.
We have to vote on the-
This is a big one, thank you, Mrs. Bloom.
We just need a motion?
So move.
I may second.
Okay, so that was Mr. Smith and Mrs. Pabon.
Very excited, Miss Pabon.
All right, Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Mrs. Napalatana?
Yes.
Mrs. Pabon?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Okay. Now, we can open to public for any items that you would like to discuss. Anyone for public? Yes, no? Yeah, start time in the, okay. Three-minute timeframe.
Hi, my name is Jeannie, I'm a parent and Saverville resident.
You need to give us your name and your address, please.
My address?
Yes. Or, you can say Barlin or you can say-
This is being recorded on video, I'm sorry.
You can say section, you don't have to actually give the house address.
By Ernston Road, is that fine? By Ernston Road, is that okay?
Okay.
Okay.
But I didn't get a last name?
Divine?
Go ahead.
I had a question about, I was reading through policy 5756, as Dr. Labby suggested. And I had a question about the locker room, I wasn't aware that my son maybe, you know, that, I feel like that's putting possibly the transgender person also at risk going into another locker room where children are changing because they are transgender. So let's say a woman or a girl that identifies as a boy could walk into that locker room and see the other children changing. It's just, it just seems like it's, could be putting everybody in a bad situation and might be a little dangerous. I just didn't know that was in there.
Did you ask a question or are you just making a comment? Is that, you just wanted to make a comment?
No, I just want to know, are they, I think last time you said they weren't going to vote on it? That this is just-
I, I didn't, no, that's not what I said. I said that this is an approved Board of Education policy, so there, there's no voting on it.
There's no, right, that's what I meant.
It's already been voted on, it's already been approved.
Okay, and as far as sports, um, from what I see, the school district shall allow, I'm just reading from the policy, a transgender student to use a restroom or locker room and then- And then also, I thought it says, as far as sports, it was the same thing as far as what they identify as, is that correct?
If it's in the policy, yes, it's correct. The policy is what it is.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else from public?
Good evening. Dan Finn, I'm from Aberdeen, at least temporarily. I'm in the process of moving. So, many school districts have been taking another look at policy 5756, and as more parents have, you know, become more aware of what's in it and the implications, they've become concerned, along with teachers. I know a couple of teachers that are very concerned about it and how they're expected to handle the guidelines, the very vague guidelines. And some argue we don't need to do anything about 5756 because we don't think we have a problem here in our grade schools. And for Sayerville, everything I've heard is that you do have a great school district here. Well, you may not, or you may think you do not, but it is irrefutable that the conditions, narrative, policies, and various avenues of indoctrination will and are already ushering in an epidemic of gender dysphoria and confusion among our youth that is coming to your doorstep, if not on it. Consider holidays like, let's celebrate LGBTQIA Month. Well, we have Memorial Day, we have Martin Luther King Day, et cetera, but we have LGBTQIA Month. So I ask, just what exactly are we celebrating for a whole month while kids are being encouraged to believe they were born in the wrong body? Or worse, that they can actually transition to the other sex? And if that's not enough of a delusion, they can just forget about the only two biological sexes and choose whatever imaginary gender they feel like, with full assurance that the adults in the room will validate that delusion. Then there is the LGBTQIA Awareness Week, Day of Silence, and several more, all being infused into our impressionable young children. We don't have a large population of students with gender dysphoria now, but some adults seem to want more and help facilitate conditions for kids to go down this path. I personally think they have a psychological need to be validated that explains why they are going after children and want to radically change social norms, redefine gender, marriage, et cetera. But here's the thing, 5756 validates all of that cumulative messaging and amounts to grooming, flat-out indoctrination by government overreach, and an attack on the hearts and minds of our children and my children. Everything about 5756 is harmful. Some conservatives, some say conservatives are fear mongering or don't want or don't know what's actually in the policy, as they assert it is about providing a safe place for children to be autonomous in their gender identity from parents.
I'm sorry, I'm going to ask you to start wrapping it up. You're already over three minutes, so I'll give you a couple of seconds to finish up here, but.
Thank you. I can assure you, I have read it in detail, and there are some very concerning parts of the policy that's vague and violates, I think, parental rights and other things. So I'll just say, affirming without questioning is something I think every one of you should look up, affirm, and what it really means, and think about that in the context of this policy, where it says affirm without question, without diagnosis. So I hope you'll reject this divisive and dangerous policy that creates special rights for a few at the expense of others, that will cause harm to those same few while providing no real benefit to anyone. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
And your service.
Is there anyone else from public? Let us remind you that if it's on the same topic, it cannot be on the same topic, okay? If you need to speak.
No.
It needs to be.
It's only if the person comes up twice.
I'm sorry?
It's only if the same person comes up twice.
Okay, same person, all right. Go right ahead, three minutes. And if you have a question, please ask the question.
Good evening. I'm Kim Lindley. I'm from Old Bridge. I'm a former special education teacher. And there are a few things, I'll try and make it short, that I'm concerned about, is that when you made the policy and to reflect upon it, is that the brain development, the brain development, when the child is of age 13, that's where your identity starts coming in hormones. So it's a cycle. You know, a child may feel something this way, and at 25, another way, and it's been proven, and the prefrontal cortex of the brain, that's when, yes, ma'am?
You're popping, just step back a little bit.
Oh, so sorry, I'm sorry. All right. So, I mean, biologically, with the brain development being, you know, from 13 to 25 to 30, how in the world can we come to a conclusion that that child is able to make that decision is number one? Two, a concern of mine is the open communication between parent and teacher. That is pivotal in a relationship, and we all are taught as teachers that you need those communication lines open, and it's so important because academics, absenteeism, teach, less classroom management skills are required, you're more required engaging the students. It has been proven, I have, what do you call it, references to that. Another thing that I was sitting here and I was listening, as far as the teachers, they are able to keep, from policy 5756, keep the gender identity of that child under confidence. However, I was reviewing before I came this evening about the family education rights. So parents are able to have their records of their students. If they have a problem with their records, they're able to get them changed. So it seems to me there's a little, it doesn't match, because on one hand, the student is having the challenge of it. On the other hand, by federal rights, the parents are entitled to the records, to the information given. How does that parent known with this policy intact that they are given the right information? You know, and when the student is able to come up and say they decide they want to tell their parent, that's the time. In elementary school, oh my lord. You know, those kids, the most, two impressionable people, in my opinion, I'm sorry, is the teacher and the parent, the two most significant role models in their lives. And I was an elementary teacher, I was special ed. I loved them. They were my children for that time, they were not my kids. I was a representative of my child when she had challenges in her school, and I was very blessed to be a teacher, and it was a career and a passion that I miss. However, I don't understand, and you can't apply one policy that has elementary students, middle school, and then you have high school. And even after high school, we all have, well, I don't know if everybody has college students, but adulting. I want to thank you for your time, and I hope I didn't make too much noise. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good evening. My name's Carolyn Mack, and I am from Old Bridge. And I'm also here to talk about policy 5756. This came on our radar probably about a year and a half ago, and we've been to probably 13 to 15 different school districts to talk about the policy. I, you know, first time here, being in Sayerville, but I hope that you, each one of you, as the gatekeepers, for what comes into this district and what the children of this district will be seeing, I hope you've got your antenna up with this policy. It is a bad policy. It was rolled out by Strauss Esme under the direction of our governor. It was rolled out as a mandatory policy. It was never mandatory. I, I hope that you're doing your homework. This deserves your time. It's not a mandatory policy. It was, it's guideline, it's a guideline only. So if you were to decide to trash this policy, and that's where it belongs, in the trash, we have laws like laws against discrimination that protect these children, which are, what, maybe 1% of the total population, and because of this 1%, we are turning, you are turning upside down what happens in the schools, allowing boys, really? Are we talking, are we, you guys are okay, I don't know how many of you have children, but you're okay with letting your boys in with your daughters in the locker room or in a bathroom? Because this is what this is opening the door to, and this is what will continue under this policy. It doesn't create a fair or protective environment for all the children. It puts, it puts them at risk, especially girls. I don't know if you're talking to the girls who are in school and afraid to use the bathroom, they're going all day holding it because they don't want to go into a bathroom where they're afraid there would be a boy in there. I can't imagine going to school under circumstances like that, where you can't even go in and use a bathroom, a restroom, when you need to. And we know what's happening in girls' sports. We're seeing across the country what's happening, where boys are, transgendered boys are playing girls' sports and injuring girls badly. So this isn't a policy that protects anyone. It's a fallacy to think that children are being, are endangered by parents who would find out that they are transgendered or wanting to be called by a different pronoun, and then that child is being thrown out. You know, if that happens, they're protected under different laws. Okay, and I hear that my time is up. I'm just asking, I mean, I see a glazed look over many eyes. This deserves your attention, it deserves your scrutiny. When this policy is scrutinized, it gets a failing grade on every, every level I can think of, lawsuits, the endangerment of children, and I'm just asking you to take a close look at it. It's a problem, it belongs in the garbage. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Gerald Maglio from the Dolores Turco Foundation. I live in Neptune, but our foundation, we, our mission is to protect children from abuse, neglect, and exploitation, and we believe that all human beings are created in the image and likeness of God, and therefore we do not discriminate against anyone for any reason. I'd like to bring up two reasons why this policy should be, urge you to repeal it. One, because it violates constitutional rights of parents, and secondly, because this policy is based on a, it's been exposed by a organization that is under malpractice, has been exposed for malpractice. I'll first talk about the, the legal. Parents do have a fundamental right under the Fifth, Ninth, and Fourteenth Amendments of the United States to direct the upbringing, education, and care of their minor children. And federal courts have been striking down illegal and unconstitutional policies like this, one that infringes upon parental rights. A San Diego court, district court ruled that it's similar, Governor of California, very similar to our policy here, barring schools from notifying parents when children want to change their genders, was, he struck that down, opposing it, stating, quote, "A parent's right to make decisions concerning the care, custody, control, and medical care of their children is one of the oldest and fundamental liberty interests that Americans enjoy." And recently, a California school district paid $100,000 to a mom and her daughter for a policy that kept parents in the dark about gender identity of their children. I'd like to quote another case, similar case, this is Olson versus, Maribel versus Olson. The court here stated that it has three harms. It harms the, it harms the parents by driving them of the, of course, Fourteenth Amendment right to care and guide their children. It harms administrators and staff because they're compelled to violate parents' rights by forcing them to conceal information, and it also harms the, and the notion that government power should supersede the parental authority in all cases because some parents abuse and neglect children is repugnant to the American tradition. The other point I wanted to make today had to do with the, this policy came from the American School Counselor, the American School Counselor Association is the biggest purveyor of transgender health, and their source is the World Association of Transgender Health. Recently, files were leaked that shows widespread medical malpractice on children and adults by this global authority. Members are fully aware that children and adolescents cannot comprehend lifelong consequences of gender-affirming care. And these files, I'll just, I'll just two more sentences and I'm done, show that what is called gender medicine is neither science nor medicine because it does not meet the standards of being evidence-based, meet the rule of doing no harm, nor is it age-appropriate. So I just wanted to bring these two points to your attention to demonstrate that this policy is harmful to children and violates parental rights. And thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Anyone else from public?
For lowering this for me. My name is Jennifer Woodruff, and I'm a prior resident of Sayerville, and I live in Morganville. And I don't want to inundate you with this 5756 policy, but it's very important that you understand the reason it really has to be rescinded. It's divisive discriminatory, it gives special rights to a selective group of children, gives them way too much power. Having a special policy for a select group will only open the door to more kids wanting special rights, especially in today's entitled society when everyone feels that they're offended. You're opening a can of worms. The 5756 policy is vague, there are no clear procedures. It does not require that the parents be notified if a child wants to be identified as a different gender. Who determines if parents are notified and what are the factors on making that decision? The way the policy is written, it is bound to open a school of, open the school to lawsuits due to the ambiguous language. There's already an HIV policy in place that takes care of all children, including the LGBTQ community. Why another policy that is not aligned with the HIV policy? This will only cause more confusion to the staff and legal issues down the road. We already know it causes problems, and uncomfortable positions in the bathroom, the locker rooms, and in sports can lead to sexual harassment and assault, not fair to the majority. And parents should never be left in the dark when it comes to behavioral issues with their children. If a child has a headache, the parents have to be called to give them a Tylenol. Why are we not requiring parental involvement here? We are fully aware that this transgender movement is on the rise with no real medical basis. What we do know is there are many trans influencers on the internet, and there was a big spike during COVID because of isolation. We also know that most children will outgrow this gender confusion by the time they graduate from high school. We have also learned that the longer a child identifies and is affirmed in this new gender, the harder it will be for them to come back. Social transitioning leads to medical transitioning, puberty blockers that can sterilize the child for life, and then hormones, and then medically, I mean, then surgical disconfiguring. Why are we affirming something that is not true and never will be? Why should we confuse a child more by affirming this gender confusion when it'll only make them feel worse about themselves when they realize they can never change their gender? I've read countless articles, listened to tons of videos, and there's all many, many professional people that have learned and have found that affirming a child's gender confusion will only lead them down the path. And there's a woman by the name of Erica Anderson, she's a PhD, she's got all kinds of credentials, she's a clinical psychologist, and she's also a transgender woman. She has written a 37-page affidavit that just, all of the. She has written a 37-page affidavit that just, all it's about is that how important it is for the parents to be involved with the child during this time. They're the ones that are responsible for the child. They're the ones that know their child.
Thank you.
They're the ones that can help their child. I appreciate it, and please, really consider rescinding this policy. It's just going to lead to all kinds of problems for our children, and we'll look back someday and wish we had done something different if we don't rescind it. Thank you.
Anyone else from public?
Good evening. My name is Ron Mack. I'm from Old Bridge. And again, I'd like to encourage you to get, look into and rescind policy 5756. We've seen this being rescinded and abolished all over the state. School after school is doing this. There's reasons they're doing it. Yeah, there are. Don't shake your head, no, yes, there are. The, there's a gorilla in the room, and there's an elephant in the room that nobody's talking about. The gorilla in the room is that we're talking about the students here, 95% of them are higher, are minors. So we're talking about minors, in the legal sense. This is a growing industry. It's a $2.1 billion industry that didn't exist a little while ago, and it's growing like crazy. With it, that's what's growing right beside it, and what is the elephant in the room, is the legal transitions that are happening, that are following this. You never hear the word detransitioning. You don't hear that when this is discussed. You can very simply Google Chloe Cole, and she was encouraged to do this as a minor in school by several people, counselors, and even medical people and her parents. Now she's coming back and suing these people. Your, your school legal counsel should do a study on what this is going to extrapolate forward to these lawsuits, because they are just starting, and they're going to happen. So I would encourage you to rescind this, to do a study of what legal jeopardy you are putting Sayerville under, and it's five years from now, and the chickens will come home to roost. Thank you for listening. Thank you very much. Bye.
Thank you.
Anyone else from public?
Hello, my name is Alice Marie. I am from Coltsneck, New Jersey, and I am concerned...
Where are you from? Sorry, I didn't hear you. We're going to ask you to get a little closer to the microphone.
From Coltsneck, New Jersey. And I am also concerned about this policy 5756, and hope that you will consider abolishing it. I just was concerned also hearing the first parent who came up here. And there is a concern about bathroom use, and it's part of the policy, but there are plenty of headlines. Virginia judge finds transgender teen guilty of sexual assault in Lunen County High School girls' bathroom. In Oklahoma, transgender student charged with assaulting female high school classmates in bathroom. Transgender Wyoming woman convicted of sexually assaulting a 10-year-old girl in the bathroom. So this is a transgender woman, means it's really a male. The person's really a male. Another transgender student flashed four freshman girls in the locker room after swim class in Wisconsin. Teenage girl was terrified in locker room with naked transgender woman, which means it's a man. Okay, and it goes on and on and on, of cases across the country. And the reason this is a concern is because it's been happening in California and all across the country. There seems to be a push. It's a social contagion, we're finding out, and kids are watching things on the internet a lot, and deciding that, wow, maybe I might have, especially girls, a male brain. And there being, a lot of agendas coming down from the state that we're concerned about, that I'm concerned about. I'm a teacher in a public high school, and this came to me about a year ago, where we were getting counseling and continuing education, and had a bunch of transgender students that were explaining that some of them were starting on hormones at this young age. I'm concerned that the parents are notified, which is in the policy that they are allowed to be hidden. But the point is, is that we need to find out what's right and what's true, and biology is saying that you can't change. There are people that, by the age of 18, as the woman said, 11 studies, the Toronto 2021 study, said that they go back to their birth gender by 18, 80 to 90%. So there's a concern, because now in New Jersey, there's a law that was passed by the Assembly about two weeks ago, saying children now at 14 can obtain hormones without parental permission. So I believe there's a big agenda coming across the country that is pushing this. Why? I don't know. I believe it's for, to prevent, you know, families and the breakdown of family, and the breakdown of a man and a woman. But just think, if a child does go into transition, they may sterilize themselves, they may remove healthy body parts, and then change their mind and have to live with regret for the next 70 years of their life. And as an educator, I don't want to be someone that says, I have to affirm this in a child in my class. And I think you should really consider that, because my rights are freedom to speak my conviction, my religious conviction, and to just tell the truth. And as he said about detransition, there's just one more thing. There are thousands coming out. So even if it's about lawsuit or money, I don't care. I want to do the right thing, and I need to be allowed to do that. So I hope you'll consider reappealing this policy 5756.
Thank you.
Anyone else from public? Yes, no? Okay, at this time, we will close public. Any closing comments from board members?
On a totally different topic.
Yes.
I would like to congratulate Dr. C. and the Sayerville War Memorial High School marching band on an amazing performance in the South Amboy St. Patrick's Day Parade this past weekend.
You went to that, did you?
I did.
And you're, and you're still here.
Well, it took a couple of days.
I would also like to mention that on Saturday, the 23rd, the American Legion is sponsoring an Easter egg hunt. So if you have little ones who like to hunt for eggs, take them over there. And on Sunday, the 24th, the Lion's Pancake Breakfast will be held in the Sayerville War Memorial High School cafeteria.
I have something to say.
And I think the East Coast one is going to be there, too.
I have something to say.
Go ahead.
I would like this board to think about what we just heard. This is a traveling group that's going to local board meetings to get people to vote against this, to, they're all talking about their rights, the parents' rights, but the rights of the children have not been discussed. And I think we have to take a long, hard look to really protect those children from people who travel to board meetings to get us to vote against them. And that's something that I take very seriously, and I think we all should not forget what we've witnessed tonight.
Anybody else? Okay, meeting is adjourned.
We need a motion.
We need a motion.
We need a second.
So moved, second.
Okay, thank you.